There is. We'll call our meeting to order. First item is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Skook.
Present.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nye.
So glad to be here.
And Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
And Councilmember Rooney.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, next item, discussion. Civic Center Elevator Rehab. Norv, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Got a little story here for you. What I'm going to talk to you about tonight is the elevator rehabilitation we want to do at the Civic Center. Actually, as we got into some of the bidding process, actually call them the cabs. So we've got two cabs, so to speak, the two elevators at the Civic Center. Well, we had money in the budget this year to do some rehabilitation. They are in good working order, but they haven't really had any significant upgrades or cosmetic enhancements since the building was built in 99. Obviously, over time, with the library was in there for a great number of years, we've had to replace some of the panels. So they're looking pretty well tattered, the carpet's pretty well tattered, so they're in need of some rehabilitation. So we had money in the budget this year to take a look at doing some rehabilitation. So we do what we usually do and go out for written quotes and say, "Well, here's what we want." Basically, on the elevators, we're going to replace the panels. You can't just go to your local hardware store to replace the panels. That's unique. There's special people that make those. There's a little more to it. So you can't go to a local hardware store. So what we did was we made contact with actually the people that sell that type of stuff, and also to local general contractors, hoping that someone would give us a written quote. And when we did the estimates, we thought it'd be around, you know, less than $16,000 for our town procurement that the town manager could sign. Well, we go out for written quotes, contacted seven people, three general contractors and four suppliers that sell the stuff, looking for either, because obviously, we can't really install a house that takes specialized tools and some good workmanship. We took written quotes and only got one response for $26,000. Well, lo and behold, $26,000 is more than the manager can sign under town procurement. So we said, "We have to publicly advertise it." So we took the same technical specs and same everything and said, "Okay, we publicly advertise it, use it more like a capital project," which is required. We had a pre-construction meeting, and nobody showed and said, "Well, hopefully, we'll get some bids." Well, the second time around, we didn't get any bids. What we're finding out is this type of project's kind of in between. A general contractor that has the overhead to bid something like this isn't really enough work for him to do. Specialized work is basically only ordered materials. It's two days to basically put it in, you know, each only taking one cab out. So it's really just a material supplier-type thing and a specialized contractor. Well, these specialized contractors are usually subcontractors. They don't bid as generals. They don't have the overhead. We even took out some performance bond requirements. So we struck out on the public bid. Couldn't find an elevator contractor to come in and actually do the work as specified. So really, what we're asking for tonight, and staff's recommendation, is we did go out for written quotes. It was more than what we could award by our procurement regulations. Went out for public bid and called the contractors and said, "No, we don't do that. We usually work as a sub." So we struck out there. I guess what it boils down to is us and council's permission for a discussion. Go ahead and award to the written quotes for $26,000. That's within the budget. And do the rehabilitation on the cabs with two elevators, which means new panels and new flooring put into place. That's the story. So we've worked hard, been a long ways, but really looking forward to hopefully, you know, moving forward with awarding of this contractor, because we've worked hard and really can't find, we've exhausted all the opportunities to look for contractors and the materials. On behalf of any, answer any questions at this point.
Laura?
I don't have any questions, but I have information to share. Leah Duke and I were invited to look at the materials, the colors, et cetera, the panels that will go in there. And we were in total agreement on what we thought would not only look well, but handle the heavy use. And I just happened this week to come in when that company was here, and the elevator door opened, and there they were with all the various samples and things. So they recognized me and said, "Oh, good. Here are all the samples. What do you think?" And I can assure you that they are quality. I can assure you that it's going to look better than it's looked in quite a while, because you were kind. I think it's very beaten up myself. And it will be true to the design of our building. And my understanding with the particular panels is that their quality and that they can handle well the usage that they will be subjected to. But at the same time, we will have some, what I will call artistic integrity in the overall appearance for those who notice such things. So on behalf of Leah Duke and I, we were just delighted we got to have a voice.
Whiting?
Yeah, I just want to clarify the work that's actually going to be done. Are they just going to remove the panels and replace them, or are they replacing the whole elevator car?
Just the panels.
Okay.
And the current carpets being torn out, and actually, a very durable laminate-type of flooring put in, more like a tile.
Is the lighting in the elevators going to be changed to LEDs, or is it going to remain the same?
I can't answer that with confidence, but anytime we've had the opportunity to change LEDs, there might be LEDs in there now.
Okay.
We have looked at the lighting.
All right. I just wanted to be sure, you know, the level that's going to be done, whether it's the whole car or just the panels. And I think it's going to be great, no matter what we do.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Larry? Harvey, Mayor and Council. Our building is now 19 years old. We moved into that building 19 years ago. And although we still get a good many compliments on the architectural style and the construction of it, buildings need to be refreshed. And our building has gone through a refreshing about 10 years ago, and we had a major renovation, which redid the executive offices that you use frequently down on the third floor. We incorporated parts and wreck in that. And then also on the second floor, major renovation in the community development and utilities area. We are approaching, and I'm going to suggest that each year for the next four years, there'd be one floor that will end up getting paint job, floor covering, and that kind of thing, just because the building is in need of it, because it's nearly 20 years old. And so that would be a project that would be available to be discussed during our budget retreat a week from tomorrow.
Any other questions? Laura, something else?
I just wanted to add to that. That's two of the furniture, too. We have managed that same furniture. We reupholstered, you know, a couple of floors of furniture, but we have all the same furniture from the day this building opened for the majority of the space.
Good. Anyone else? Anything else, Norv?
No, we'll take it back next week and hopefully move for approval next week.
I think everybody's for that.
Very good. We'll bring it back next week. Thank you.
Okay, number four. Presentation, water basics. Neil, you are up. I guess the rule is the same, water doesn't go uphill, does it, Neil?
All right. I trust the monitor is working tonight.
It works.
Great, great. All right, well, thank you for letting me come before you tonight and present this information.
You don't have to mic up just a little, Neil?
Sure, sure. I don't like to sound too loud, but so a little while back, Larry asked John Munderlo and I to go out into the community and provide this presentation to our citizens. Essentially, it's very similar to the presentation that we give at Citizens Academy every year. And we've got so many new citizens coming in and people always asking questions about water. So we gave four of these talks back in late November and early December, and this is the last of those talks. And I know that you saw John Munderlo here before Christmas, so he gave his half of the talk, and now it's my turn to give my half. And so what I'm not going to talk about, obviously, are the things that he covered relative to how much water do we have and where's new water coming from. But I will say that, you know, we have a couple hundred-year water supply beneath our feet, so there's no immediate concerns. And, you know, we are doing planning for the future so that we can make sure that our water supply is sustainable. But what I'm going to talk about now is the, basically, the water infrastructure, what we have here in town, how we, let's see, how we move the water around, you know, what our water utilities are, what our water quality is, and kind of how we operate the system. So that's what I'm going to talk about. And so we have basically four different water utilities. We have a wastewater system. We have a reclaimed water system. We have recharge, and we have drinking water. And I'm going to talk about first the wastewater system, and I'm going to provide you a little bit of history about that. And the reason that I'm starting with that one is because that's actually the first water utility that the town had. We had a wastewater system before we owned a water system. And so back in the early 1990s, the town was growing. We had about 5,000 homes in town, and we were a growing community. People want to come and live here. And in a community where you've got lots that are platted close together and you're growing, you can't survive on septic tanks. You'd be installing way too many of them in too small of an area. Septic tanks don't treat the water, so it would soak into the ground, and it would be starting to affect our water supply. And so back then, we embarked on a project not only to install a centralized collection system and treatment plant, but also to go in and pave a whole bunch of roads, 130 miles of roads, because back then, we didn't have very many, if any, paved roads. So, you know, whatever road, streets you lived on in town, when you got up in the morning and drove to work, you were driving on a dirt road, and same at night when you came home. And so that was causing some air quality problems as well with all the dust in the morning and at night. So back then, we went in and we started installing sewer lines. We abandoned 5,000 septic tanks. We paved 130 miles of roads, and we constructed a wastewater treatment plant that would handle the waste from the town of Prescott Valley. And so that treatment plant, back at that time, was able to handle 2.5 million gallons per day of flow, and the cost was right around $50 million to do that project. We did have the opportunity in 2006 to expand our treatment plant, because it was starting to get up to the 2.2 million gallon per day range. So we were getting close to our capacity. So we expanded the plant to handle 3.75 million gallons per day at a cost of $18 million. And although we will have to maybe upgrade different parts of the plant from time to time, the core capacity of the plant should be good for us for a minimum, say, 12 years, but potentially longer, depending on what happens with our growth. So I'm going to run through a couple of quick slides to show you where the treatment plant is located. And you see the big arrow there. And if you drive down Fane Road, heading down towards Highway 69, and you look off to the right-hand side, just before you get to the industrial park down there, you'll see a complex of buildings with green roofs. So that is the town's wastewater treatment facility. And there's a couple pictures of it. We do actually have, you'll see in this photo, a large array of solar panels adjacent to the plant. Those were installed in 2012, and those at the plant provide for one-third of the power that we use at that treatment plant. The remainder of it, we buy from Arizona or APS. So what we have is a, it's called an advanced or a tertiary wastewater treatment facility. And what that means is that it provides one of the highest levels of treatment that's recognized by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, and it has biological treatment, it has filtration, clarification, and UV disinfection. And as I mentioned earlier, it is designed to treat 3.75 million gallons of wastewater per day. What this plant does in a 24-hour period of time is the same thing that could happen out in the environment naturally, but it would take much longer, because we've got such a concentrated amount of flow. You put that into a natural stream, it's going to take a long, long time for that to, for the microorganisms in the environment to break that waste product down. So we do that at the treatment plant in a 24-hour period of time. We are growing microorganisms. The microorganisms will consume the waste product, and they produce carbon dioxide and water, and then they also reproduce. After the biological treatment, we also do screening, filtration, and UV disinfection prior to either discharge of the water to the Agua Fria, or providing it up to Mountain Valley Park, or Stone Ridge Golf Course, or recharging it into the ground. So here's a couple of other photographs. This is the biological process that I mentioned. That's where the microorganisms live. This is a belt press. It's for treating the solids or the biological portion. Once we collect that, we get the water out of it, haul it off to landfill. So these are basically the dead microorganisms that we're no longer using at the treatment All right, so currently, we are treating about 2.6 million gallons per day. As I said, we can go to about 3.75, and that's when we will run out of capacity. Our permit, which is issued by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, requires us to discharge water that has a biochemical oxygen demand of less than 30 milligrams per liter, total suspended solids of less than 30, and nitrogen at less than 10 milligrams per liter. And we do meet all of those requirements. And in fact, our biochemical oxygen demand is usually around 7 milligrams per liter, and our total suspended solids is usually less than 10. I'm going to kind of talk about biochemical oxygen demand a little bit, just to let you know what that really means. It's a long fancy term, but it's a measure of the strength of the wastewater, the treated water. So coming into the plant, the biochemical oxygen demand, or BOD, is around 400 milligrams per liter. Leaving the plant, it's less than 30. And so you can see it's a much reduced strength of wastewater. And what that means is we're measuring the oxygen demand in the water. So microorganisms will decompose and eat whatever the waste product is, and while they're doing that, they consume oxygen, just like you and I consume oxygen every single day. So the amount of waste that's in that water, the higher the concentration or strength of that, the more oxygen the microorganisms consume while they're decomposing it. And so that's the oxygen demand. So the higher the oxygen demand, or biochemical oxygen demand, the more concentrated the waste is, or more polluted it is. Okay? So that's how we measure it. And as we're growing those microorganisms, we're feeding them food, which is our waste. We are giving them air. You saw some of the big blowers in some of those pictures. But they're also reproducing. And as they reproduce, we have to get rid of some of them, because we only have a certain volume of an environment for them. We have a certain amount of food coming in every day, so we can't just let them continue to grow and grow and grow. Every day, we are pulling some of those solids out of the plant. We are putting them through the belt press to take the water out, and then we're hauling them off to Gray Wolf Landfill. And that's what the 5,000 tons of solids are that we are disposing annually. I showed you a picture a minute ago of a couple of trucks back there. Roughly one truckload per day leaves the plant and goes to Gray Wolf Landfill. And so in a nutshell, that is the wastewater treatment plant. We are treating all of the waste product from everybody's homes, from the businesses, the hospitals, the grocery stores. All of that comes to our wastewater treatment plant and gets treated. So at that point, we have treated effluent. We have a water resource that we can use for something else. And in Arizona, as you know, water is very scarce, and so that water is reused for other purposes. One of the purposes that we use it for is for our reclaimed water system, which provides water to the two ponds that are in Mountain Valley Park and to the golf course at Stone Ridge. So all the grass you see over there and all the irrigation for that golf course, it is watered 100% with treated effluent from our wastewater treatment plant. There's no potable water used on that golf course. So to get the water there, there's a three-mile pipeline that takes it from the wastewater treatment plant up to Mountain Valley Park, which is shown here. And then across the street from Mountain Valley Park, on the south side of Lake Shore Drive, you will see this building. This is a pumping station, so it pumps it from that location and pumps it all the way four more miles over to Stone Ridge. The, there's an inset picture there that shows the pumps and what's inside that building.
Neil, why are you wasting taxpayer money painting those pumps your favorite color of purple?
It doesn't cost any more than any other color of paint.
He's a troublemaker.
He is, he is.
But there's a good answer.
Well, there's a reason they're purple, and that is the official color of reclaimed water is purple. And so when there's any construction going on, for example, you call in a blue state to have underground utilities located, if you're going to put in a fence at your house or do something, you have to call in the blue state and have them mark utility locations. And they will mark, paint on the ground, red is power, yellow is gas, blue is water. Well, purple is reclaimed water. And so that's why those pumps are purple. All right, and then so the end user of that is the Stone Ridge Golf Course. All right, the other use of our water from the treatment plant is for recharge. And I know John probably talked about this when he came and talked to you last month. So we have actually two recharge facilities, and the purpose of the recharge facilities is to take that water and put it back down into the ground so that it can be reused again in the future. Originally, we were recharging that water in the Agua Fria River bed downstream from the treatment plant, and that's what we call the in-channel facility. And we used to do that and get about 50% credit, and the credit comes from the Department of Water Resources. They said, "If you put a gallon in the ground, we'll give you credit for a half a gallon that you can take out later on somewhere else as, you know, potable water." Well, obviously, we would like to get more credit than just 50%. And so they said that we could get 95% if we did what's called a constructed facility. And I'm going to show you here. This is what's considered a constructed facility. We put earthen berms across the channel in about 40 different locations to create ponds there that would allow the water to soak in the ground. So just by doing that, we are able to get 95% credit for the water. Well, this facility is generally at capacity most of the time. We need more capacity to get the water in the ground, because here in Arizona, we have a lot of clay soils. Water doesn't soak into the ground very quickly, so we've got more of it coming into the plant than we can get into the ground. And so we went back and said, "Well, we need to do something different." And this in-channel facility works okay, but every time we have a storm event, it washes out those earthen berms. Even if it's a small one, it'll cut a hole through the middle of them, and we have to go back and rebuild it. If it's the large monsoons, and you've seen it where the Agua Fria River is flowing bank to bank, it wipes all those berms out, and we've got to go back in and start all over again. So you might ask, "Well, that was stupid to build them out of dirt. Why don't you go in and put concrete across there, and then you don't have to rebuild them and save a whole bunch of labor?" But we can't do that, because the stormwater that comes through there, we have to allow the stormwater to pass through. We can't retain any of that, because that water doesn't belong to us. It belongs to downstream users. That water, when it leaves this area, goes to Lake Pleasant. It's actually water that belongs to the Salt River Project. And so even though we could argue that, you know, we're really not retaining that much water in those ponds, the Department of Water Resources will not let us retain a single drop of it. So we have to allow those berms to break loose. So obviously, the solution to getting more water into the ground would be to construct another facility that isn't in the bottom of a river channel. And so that is the, what we call the North Plains Recharge Facility. We constructed that in 2012, and I'm going to back up here just a little bit. So we constructed the bottom, the North Plains Off-Channel Recharge Facility in 2012 in order to get more water into the ground. So this map will show you both locations. The wastewater treatment plant, located in the middle of the screen, downstream from there along the Agua Fria River basin, that's the in-channel facility, about two, two-and-a-half miles, that full length downstream. And then a mile north of the treatment plant, we've got some land there that we are leasing from State Land Department, which is where we constructed the North Plains Recharge Facility. Again, you can see this in the picture here. So this is the North Plains Facility. We constructed five basins, and we have the ability to add additional basins in the There are the five basins shown, and what we do is we pump water into one basin until it's full, and then we go to the next basin and the next basin. And we return back to the first basin after it has had a chance to dry out. The drying of the surface and the cracking basically helps to rejuvenate the pond, and then we'll go back and put more water in and allow that to soak in. A lot of times, by the time we get down to the fifth basin, the first basin isn't dry yet. As I mentioned, you know, we have clay soils here. It takes a long time. So between this and the in-channel facility is how we handle most of the water from the treatment plant. Here's a couple of aerial photographs. We do have a permit for this facility as well, and just like anything else, it has to do with water or government in Arizona. There are regulations. We have to monitor the water level beneath the facility. We have to monitor the water quality. We have reports that we have to fill out weekly and monthly and send in to the Department of Water Resources. So it's highly regulated. And so the purpose, obviously, is to get that water back into the ground. We will be able to use that water for future residents coming into town. I know that John did talk about our water credits and what we've done with those, so I'm not going to talk about any of that. The next topic is the drinking water system. We purchased the drinking water system in 1999 from Fane Land and Cattle. It used to be called the Shamrock Water Company back then, and we had been negotiating many, many years, both successfully and unsuccessfully. But finally, in 1999, we did buy the Shamrock Water Company, and that became the Town of Prescott Valley Water System. Prior to that, we did have a small water system, which was in the Viewpoint subdivision, and that was installed by the developer in 1996 and given to the town to own and operate. I'll show you some pictures here. So this is what we call the Tank Farm. This is over off of Prescott East Highway on the west side of town. Again, in this photograph, you see that we do have a solar field right next to it. Those solar panels provide 50% of the power that we use at this location. So those two buildings right there are booster pumping stations. They pump water from this location up to the tanks that you see on Glassford Hill. So there's one right here on the east side of Glassford Hill, and that is called the Summit Tank. So one of those booster stations pumps to that location. The other one pumps to the tank that's up behind Home Depot. This map provides you with an idea of how large our system is. Essentially, we are in the core of Prescott Valley, which is the cross area. We also go up into We also go up into Viewpoint and Pronghorn Ranch. We serve water to Mingus West, also Stone Ridge, and as far south as Quailwood and Highway 169. So that is how large our water system is. We currently have 13 water storage tanks with about 14 million gallons of storage. We have 26 wells, and we have the ability to pump 15 million gallons of water per day out of the ground. So as you're all well aware, all of our water is groundwater, which is located beneath our feet. And most of the water we pump, it's about 600 feet deep, six or 700 feet deep. So we're pumping out of the ground. And as I said, we can pump 15 million gallons per day. An average daily usage for the Town of Prescott Valley is very close to 5 million gallons per day. In the summertime, it can get a bit higher, up to about 8 million gallons per day. But you can see, we have a fair amount of reserve capacity in our wells so that when we have to take one out of service to do repair work or just to kind of rotate the area of town that we're pumping from, we do have the ability to do that. Uh, actually, and I didn't quite update this slide. We actually have a little bit over 20,000 service connections. And that translates to almost 1.8 billion gallons of water provided to our customers last year. This map shows our wells, and you can see they're spread out throughout town. Our tanks are generally in the higher locations, either on the west side of town or down in the Prescott Country Club and also just up from Quailwood. We have a very good quality of water. It comes out of the ground. We pump it right out. And the only thing that we do is add chlorine. There is no other treatment to the water. We add chlorine, obviously, to make sure that there is no bacteria in the water. And we are required to do that per federal guidelines. We don't add fluoride, but there is fluoride in the water because there are, there's fluoride in the ground. And water is a solvent. It flows through the ground. It dissolves whatever, um, rock formations it flows through. Fluoride is down there. Arsenic is down there. Um, you know, there's other naturally occurring minerals and metals and things down there. And so we have fluoride in the water. It's about 0.5 milligrams per liter. So it's less than, less than one part per million. And we are never going to add fluoride because, number one, it costs money to do that. Number two, a lot of people don't want fluoride in their water. Yeah, it's beneficial for your teeth, but you can, you know, get fluoride in your toothpaste or do fluoride treatments. But people who are on dialysis don't want any fluoride in their water. And it would cost our citizens more to add something that not everybody would get a benefit from. As I mentioned, we also have arsenic in our water. On average, it's right around seven parts per billion. The federal standard for arsenic is 10 parts per billion. So we're under the federal standard. So that's good. We're not doing any arsenic treatment at this time. Now, that may change in the future because groundwater changes. And if we continue to monitor that and those levels go up over time, we will, we may have to consider arsenic treatment in the future. And then another question I get fairly often is, you know, what is the hardness of our water? Our hardness is considered moderate. So it's between 100 and 150 milligrams per liter. Right around six or seven grains per gallon. And that's the number, the question that I get a lot in terms of water softeners. They want to know grains per gallon. What's your hardness? And so we're right around six or seven grains per gallon. And my personal opinion is that, you know, we have, we have really good water here. Back in about 2008, there were some national headlines that talked about pharmaceuticals and personal care products and that these things were showing up in drinking water systems all around the country. And so we actually took some samples and measured 85 different compounds in our water to see what do we have. And we only found two that were measurable, and that was nicotine and chlorophoric acid. Chlorophoric acid is a cholesterol medicine. And so I've put the numbers up there as far as what levels that we detected those in. And you can see all those zeros in front of the number that's after the decimal point. So .000014 milligrams per liter. That's a really, really small number. To put it in perspective, that would be equivalent to consuming one liter of water every day for 200 years in order to get the same amount of nicotine that's in one cigarette. So these are really, really low numbers. The chlorophoric acid is even lower than that. And it's equivalent to, say, finding one penny out of 12.5 billion dollars worth of pennies. You know, what, of course, nobody would be lucky enough to do that. But those are the kind of levels that we're talking about. So although they can be measured by the laboratories, at this point, nobody knows what that really means. And until these types of things get on the national radar screen as far as being something that might be of concern, there's really not anything we can do about them. One other question I get asked fairly frequently is, what, what does our chromium 6 numbers look like? And being groundwater, we do have chromium and chromium 6 in our water, but at very low levels. So back in 2012, the federal government required all water systems to test for chrome 6. It's part of what they called their Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Program. And this was the third round. So it was UCMR number three. We did that in 2012. We took 42 samples of water from all of our various wells. And our concentrations ranged from 2.5 to 16 parts per billion. And our average was about 5.5. We have a total chromium standard that we have to meet for drinking water, and that's 100 parts per billion. So that's chrome 6 plus chrome 3 plus the other chrome species. The total of all those has to be less than 100. There is no standard for chrome 6 right now. And that's why the federal government wanted everybody to measure that so they could see what are the levels out there to determine, is there an issue? And whether or not they will promulgate regulations in the future to have, uh, put in standards in place for chrome 6. California is the only state that has a standard for chrome 6, and that's 10 parts per billion. So if we're using that as a yardstick, um, most of our samples were less than 10. In fact, I believe only five of our samples were between the 10 and the 16 part per billion number that we sampled. And so, you know, right now, we're doing pretty good with that. Every year, we publish an annual water quality report. It comes out generally in, end of April or into May sometime. And so this May, the 2017 report will be available. And it has all the information on what we sampled for, the bacteriological quality, how many samples we took, what the range of samples was. And it discusses where different things, different kinds of pollutants come from. And so that'll be on our website. It's also mailed to all of our customers. So you can find the 2016 on our website right now. And if anybody has any questions, they can call me. And, you know, I can, I can answer those questions for them. I'm almost to the end of my presentation. But one of the things I wanted to talk about was, you know, one of the things that we do get asked fairly frequently is, you know, with all the people moving here, how can we sustain our water source? And as I mentioned earlier, right now, we still have a couple hundred-year supply under our feet. But there's a couple of interesting graphs here that I, John may have presented these, but I think they're very interesting, and it's good to make the point again. This graph shows two lines. One of them is the population of Prescott Valley, and that's the yellow line. And you can see how dramatically that one was going up. It leveled off a little bit, but it, but it, but since 2000 to 2016, it's gone up fairly significantly. But if you look at our total annual water usage, it stayed relatively flat since 2004. And so how is that possible? How is it that we're gaining in population and yet we're really not using any more water than we were using in 2004? And the way that we're doing that is, um, through our citizens. They are conserving water. We don't go out and require people to do things like, you know, if they have a lawn, we don't require them to tear it out. We don't require them to replace old toilets with new toilets. You know, we, the way we look at it is, you know, you can do what you want with your water. But what we're going to do is we're going to charge you more if you use more than we think you should. So we have an inverted rate structure. The first 0 to 8,000 gallons are charged at the lowest rate. If you use more than 8,000 gallons per month, the price per thousand gallons goes up. If you go over 20,000 gallons per month, it goes up again. And so people, people realize that. Starts costing more money on their own, they will conserve. And so you can see from about the year 2000 to 2016, we've had a steady decline in the, um, number of gallons per day that every, all of our citizens use. So we're, right now, we're down just under or close to 100 gallons per day per person. Now, that still sounds like a lot. But this number also includes all of the businesses that are out there. So this isn't just, you know, I know at my house, there's no way I could use 100 gallons per day, and my wife is using 100 gallons per day, and my kid, no, there's no way. But when you include, you know, the grocery stores, the hospitals, all of the users in town, the parks, everything like that, that average, so that's the total town-wide usage is about 100 gallons per person per day. And with that, I will take any questions you might have.
Questions, anyone? Um, Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Neil, just help me remember the chromium, if the levels, and I know we don't have an issue with it, but you brought it forward. If it went too high, what would we be looking at here?
With chromium, there isn't a standard yet. So there's really, the only, the only thing to be concerned about is what are the health effects? Okay, so I know there's a lot of talk about that. And like I said, in California, they've set a limit of 10. And so they think that that number is safe. Right now, we're, most, most of the samples that we took were, were less than 10. In fact, like I said, our average is 5.5. Until there's really a published standard, um, you know, or there's, there's some evidence of what that number needs to be, we don't have, we don't have an issue right now, but we do need to keep our eye on it. Once, once a number is established by the federal government, we will have to meet that standard. And if that standard is lower than 10 and we're not meeting that, then we will have to put in some type of treatment that will take that out.
Okay, thank you.
Larry, do you have a comment? No. Mike?
Yeah, I'm just on the same vein. What is the treatment for that? Is there an established treatment yet?
Um, there are different types of treatments that can be done just like any other type of pollutant. I don't know off the top of my head exactly what they would be. Generally, things like that, you could do things like ion exchange. Possibly that would be one of the, one of the easier. And that's where you put the water through a material that takes the, it would take like the chromium out and exchange it for something else or, or just absorb it completely. And then you'd have to dispose of those, like filters. So there are, there are treatments, and I, I haven't looked into what those would be at this point in time.
No, just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions? Laura?
I have two, Neil. Do you have an estimate about how long before we will run out of capacity at our current water treatment plant?
So our current capacity is 3.75 million gallons per day. We're about 2.6, 2.7. So we have about a million gallons of capacity. Right now, every citizen that moves in, on average, is using or contributing about 60 gallons a day. So, um, you know, I've, I've said generally at least 12 years. And it could be more than that. If you want, I could actually calculate what, what that number would come to. Seeing how quick my, uh...
Okay, while you're doing that, I'll ask the other half of that question. Since we know it's going to happen, are we setting aside any funds for that day?
We are collecting funds. And those funds come from the development impact fees or the capacity fees that we charge to all of the developers when the new homes are being constructed. Every new home that's built, whoever buys it home pays water capacity, wastewater capacity, and water resource fees. And those fees are put into a fund, and they're used to pay for such things as expansions of the wastewater treatment plant, upsizing water pipes, building, you know, tanks, wells, and things like that. The number calculates out to about 17,000 additional, um, people coming to Prescott Valley before we would hit that number. And so that just depends in on what our growth is.
Okay, technically, I probably have three questions because the first of them was two-part. Do we have any kind of timeline when we can build additional recharge basins? And do we know, are there any grants available to help us do that?
Well, certainly, we're looking for anything we can find for funding sources. John Munderlo, actually, that's kind of what he does. And he's, you know, he's looked at different types of grants. I don't think he's found any for building additional recharge facilities. But I know he has looked at grants for them, from the Bureau of Reclamation and so forth for, um, for other things where they're, where they are willing to fund. We are right now talking about, um, what is the next thing that we're going to do for increasing recharge capacity? And we're not so sure it's going to be additional ponds at this point in time. Unfortunately, as you're aware, with all the clay that we have up here, our soils are just not good for infiltration by putting them into ponds. So we're looking at a number of options, and we're still evaluating that report. I would imagine that here in the next month or so, you know, John may come back to you and talk to you about that report.
I'm glad to hear there are other options because it isn't optimal for us, what we're doing. But we need to be doing something, and I'm glad we do have the basins.
Rick?
Well, understanding that we are going to have to increase our capacity down the road, assuming we have more residents in Prescott Valley, which we have a history of showing that we're going to. How much time are we looking at before we have to begin building? This may be a question for Larry. I don't know.
When you're talking about capacity, are you referring to the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes.
Typically, the Department of, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality wants you to be looking at that when you hit 80% of your capacity. Um, I, I think we're looking potentially at somewhere around 12 to 15 years for that. And so, you know, we may end up, you know, we'll obviously be monitoring the flows and what's going into the plant. When we get to a point where we have to do that, we will sit down and start looking at, at design. We've got a million gallons to go right now. And, you know, as long as we stay on the pace that we've been on, we've got, like I say, 12 to 15 years before we have to really think about it. But if we get a, um, you know, some type of a significant business or industry that uses a lot of water and discharges it, obviously, that will shorten that timeframe. We would obviously charge them money in terms of the capacity fees because they would be taking up a lot of capacity of the plant. So they would have to contribute significantly to that, to that price, to that cost.
I think we can avoid large users.
I, I think generally we have just because of the way that we've priced our water. And I know as council, you guys set the policy a number of years ago that Prescott Valley does not give, um, different rates to utilities for water usage as we do to our citizens. So they're, they're looking at the same rate structure that our, that our citizens are. So I think that in and of itself discourages a lot of very large water users from, from coming up to Prescott Valley.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Jody?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Neil, I remember us asking the question about John's presentation being available... Neil, I remember us asking the question about John's presentation being available possibly on the website. And I'm going to ask the same thing of you, because this was a really good one. I appreciate it's nice and basic. I totally understand it with the four types of waters, how many wells, et cetera. I can see where our citizens would appreciate it, too.
Yes. My understanding is that after tonight, because they're recording this, that they were going to take John's presentation and mine and put them together, or whatever they're going to do, and put them somewhere on the website, so that it would be available for our citizens to look at. We do this at the Citizens Academy, but not all of the citizens go to the Citizens Academy. And so, yeah, it will be available on the website.
Any other questions? Anything else, Neil?
Not unless there's other questions.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And you're doing a great job. Just keep it up. And with that, we have one more item, and that's meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Good job.